All right. If I could get a motion, we discussed those items we went into closed session for. Two items. One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, appointments, town manager. And one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, consideration of the acquisition or disposition of real property, Washington Avenue.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Clontz.
Aye.
Mr. Reese. Okay. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. That's going to be led by Councilman Ratliff, and then invocation will be led by Councilman East. If you'd stand, please.
I'd like to join us in prayer. Please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance in all matters this evening. We thank you for your continued grace and mercy. Please grant us wisdom as we conduct the business of our town. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to welcome the guests that are here today and those online. Thank you for coming out. I appreciate seeing you all here. There's an, I don't think there's any modification to public session, so we'll just move right on. And first is Resolution 2023-34 honoring Angela Vires upon her retirement from the Pulaski Resolution honoring Angela Vires. Whereas the Town Council of the Town of Pulaski, Virginia desires to recognize and commend those staff members who upon their retirement have rendered a career of service to the citizens of the town of Pulaski. And whereas Angela Vires has, was hired as a part-time communications officer and part-time traffic enforcement officer in Jan- in January of 1990, and promoted to communications officer full-time in April of 1990. And whereas Ms. Vires became the records manager, record, records manager in August of 1998. And whereas Mrs. Vires served as both records manager and administrative secretary to the Office of the Chief of the, of Police until 2001, when she received the duties of the records manager to focus full-time on being the administrative manager for the Office of the Chief of Police, whereas she is currently serving. And whereas Ms. Vires during her service has obtained, obtained her Communication Service Certificate and General Instruction Certificate, has been awarded the non-sworn employee of the year nine times, the Town of Pulaski Employee of the Month twice, received the Education Achievement Award, and received many commend, commendations and letters of achievement from agencies such as the Environmental Protection Agency, the Virginia Law Enforcement Professionals Standards Commission, Cardinal Criminal Justice Academy, the Office of the Mayor, and various citizens in the community. And whereas Ms. Vires has been involved in the daily operations of the Pulaski Police Department, and has been pivotal in its success, committed to the Town of Pulaski Police Department's mission, dedicated to the community, and her experiences is irreplaceable. Her achievements and accolades are well documented and are well-known by her peers. And whereas Ms. Vires is congratulated on her 30 years, or 33 years of service with the Town of Pulaski Police Department, and on her many accomplishments, and now her well-earned retirement. Now therefore it be resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Pulaski, Virginia, sitting in regular session this 20th day of June 2023, that the Town Council extends its sincerest thanks and commendations, commendations to Angela Vires for her dedicated service to the citizens of the Town of Pulaski as a member of Town of Pulaski Police Department. Now therefore be it further resolved that the Town Council and town employees extend to Ms. Vires their best wishes for an enjoyable and rewarding retirement upon their resolution. So if someone would make a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2023-34 as written, a resolution honoring Angela Vires upon her retirement from the Pulaski Police Department.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Clontz.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye. Angie, would you come forward?
I'd like to have some of your police family in a photo as well, since they came out. Come on, everybody. Come on, and, and the gentleman that came with you?
I'm glad you said that because he told me no.
Well, he's one of the few people in the town that will listen to me. Well, Shorty there needs to get on the stand so you can see her.
Next is a public hearing.
For Angie's retirement came across my desk the other day, and she prepares that paperwork for the police, and at the bottom it said, "I'm retiring, hooray," and a big exclamation point. And I said to Jill, "Who did this for?" But we really are going to miss her service.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. With that, we'll move to the public hearing section. First is the comprehensive plan from Alfie Fencore.
Mr. Mayor, I think we've got a resolution amending the town personnel policy. Or did that get changed?
We changed it too.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. I was looking at the wrong one.
So if I could have the staff report, please.
Just pulling up the presentation, but thank you so much for having me here today. And I just want to, I know some of the information is kind of, I've gone over before, but just again for the benefit of everyone, a little bit background. Yeah, just gonna go over the background, some of the processes, the community engagement, our findings, and key issues that, you know, from our analysis and from the community input that we saw and we received. And then some of the key policy that is in this proposed comp plan, and we also talked about the implementation strategy. If you can move to the next slide, and the next one. Okay, so again, why we do this is because the Virginia Code requires it, and every locality in Virginia requires to adopt a comprehensive plan. And you are, you're able to amend anytime, but it is required that every five years you look at it, look at data, review it, and make amendments and updates. The Planning Commission is tasked with this work of updating the comprehensive plan, and of course they are the ones who recommend to you for your adoption. So this is a policy document. It is a guide. It's not a regulation. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, so this is the planning process. We started during COVID, December 20th, 2020, December 2020 was our kickoff meeting. When we wrote the scope for this work, online engagement platform was not a thing, but as we, we pivot for COVID, we included the online engagement platform, and we were about to wrap, so we did all the analysis data, we did the community engagement, and then we were about to get ready to finish last year in June 2022, when, you know, Ms. Burcham had already come on board, and we looked again at the future land use map and felt it was inadequate. So we paused a little bit, went back to the drawing board with the land use visioning session, which we came with you again last, last fall. We did that with the Planning Commission, and finally we were able to get some consensus and updating some part of the future land use map. Otherwise, we were coming with the same one that was in 2016. So that was a big thing that was accomplished through that exercise that we did, which led to delineating some changes to the future land use map. We did our open houses this January, February to go test the policies with the public, and we came back to you all to let you know what were the changes after the open houses. And so here we are at the adoption hearing. The Planning Commission did recommend this comp plan at the May 8 meeting. Next slide, please. Okay, so community engagement, we had about 434 people who involved, who took part in at least one or more tools on our engagement platform. About 410 people took the survey, the community survey. And then we had, we had the working group, we had the focus group, open houses, and of course monthly Planning Commission meeting. So that was the total community engagement that was involved for this process. Next slide, please. So here are some of the survey results. The priorities for livability and prosperity that, that we, you know, were able to get from our survey was the, or the quality of life that people thought was a priority was your job, infrastructure, safety and security, and high quality of education. Some of the things that they, the community felt that, you know, the town can improve on or that needs to focus on is job opportunity, growth, Wi-Fi, and internet capabilities, and a mix of businesses. And they felt like they, you know, also that what we got was that the town needed more dining, entertainment, shopping, recreational activities. Housing was also a big component of the survey, and one of the things that came up from that is affordable housing. Next slide, please. And again, like some, some people give specific businesses that they recommended, and some of the things that were mentioned the most was again restaurants, clothing store, family entertainment, youth activities. And some of the other suggestions that, you know, that came up was hotel, bike shop, et cetera. And I thought I had a word cloud, but when I did, oh, here it is, when I did the word cloud, from all the words, you know, youth activities was big, beautification, restaurants, and then we had community recreation, of course nightlife, employment programs, childcare. Those were some of the big things that came out too, that people mentioned a lot during the survey and the community input. Next slide, please. Okay, some of the findings. We did data analysis for each and every element, and some of the findings or issues that were identified, at least under the future land use, is that the most predominant land use in the town, in our future land use map is residential. There is only one residential land use category for all, from R1 to R5, you know, so there's only one land use for residential. There are properties with incompatible land uses that need to be assigned appropriate future land use and or zoning. So there's incompatibility between your zoning and your land use. And then the current comp plan, like, you know, we see already the trend for mixed use, like living, commercial kind of mixed use in, in town, that's already the trend, but you have no mixed use land use category in your future land use map. The economic development findings, some of the needs are more high-paying jobs. We, we have to program, you know, for business retention and expansion, business support like cross-marketing and funding for startups. Also, one thing that we've kind of found out was that people, you know, at the working group, they talked about business incubator, coworking space. And at the focus group, I think one of, and other places, and also through the survey, we, we observed that people were trying to say is like we have, we need better broadband and fiber optic infrastructure to attract businesses. Also, the current comp, the current future land use map, I want to mention also with the new one, we have the description for all the land use categories which was missing in the current comp plan. Next, housing, next, yeah. Housing, so data analysis shows that, you know, housing in the town, like it's all housing stock, significant number of the houses residential are single-family home, very small percentage make up the attached town homes. Town homes and apartments, that kind of, they make a very small percentage of the housing composition. Another need that from our findings is that affordable housing. For arts, culture, the town do want to keep their youth in the area to attract visitors, and for that, I think we do need recreational amenities that will, you know, keep, you know, the youth here and entertain here, and hopefully continue to stay here and grow in this, in this town. Another thing that was mentioned too was that maintenance of parks and trail. For your walkability, we need to improve the pedestrian environment, and the other, other things that we talked, that was brought up often was to promote and market the town as the destination and expand recreational and tourism opportunities. One thing too that I, we saw, we noticed in the housing section, data analysis, is that there's a decrease in homeownership. It's like this decrease in the last 10 years. So some of the future, the key policies for the different elements is, I'll start with the future land use, is to, one of them, like you said, is we do want the mixed use, the mixed use kind of environment, mixed use, land use category, and one of the policies is to promote innovative approaches for development to create a quality live, work, and shopping environment. The, another policy is to continue to identify existing land uses which are incompatible or inconsistent with the town future land use map. Another one is to eliminate inconsistent or incompatible uses, create incentives to encourage property owners to reduce or eliminate condition of blight, and the, one of the key policies also to promote walkability by creating a more appealing walking environment and improving pedestrian facilities, circulation, and accessibility. Under the economic development, one of the key policies is to identify development-ready sites. Another one is assist small businesses, encourage deployment of fiber optic and 5G broadband technologies for economic growth. The last one here that I highlighted was support employment centers and programs that identify jobs gap, and job gaps and employment needs in the town. So basically to connect employers to workers. In transportation, there are sidewalk gaps, and so one of the policies that was written was to identify pedestrian system gaps within the town and develop CIP program to complete sidewalk, sidewalk networks and improve connectivity between activity centers. Another one is delineating bike lanes when, you know, when you're improving the town roads. The last one that I highlighted here is to establish a locally designated growth area, and that will give you opportunity for another, for smart scale funding when you designate your whole town, which we propose as a smart growth area. And the next element is housing, and if you want me to go through, but I'll just quickly go through them, is to support public and private sector to provide quality housing, to review the regulations, to reduce barriers, incentive to encourage renovation of older homes, maybe looking at grants or some CDBG funding so that you can incentivize people to renovate their homes. Identify property owners willing to sell or work with the town to provide new or improved housing within the town. The last one is to encourage private developers by providing incentives, either it's, you know, through financing incentive or by through land use regulation incentives. The last one that, element they'll highlight is the art, culture, historic, and recreation element. One of them is to maintain an inventory of all the assets that you have. Another one that came up a lot was Peak Creek, so here is a policy about Peak Creek, improve areas adjacent to Peak Creek, and create waterfront public spaces for enjoyment and appreciate of the resources. The last one is to explore funding opportunities to market the available resources. That is all the policies, some of the key policies that I've highlighted, and some of the ways that we are looking at implementing is, I've done this matrix, and so I have this matrix for each and every element, what are the, some of the goals, it's not, you know, it's some of the things that are already being done or in the process, so and which goal or objective or policy that's meeting. One of the ones that I like to highlight is for the future land use map is promote innovative approaches for development to create a quality of life, live, work, and shop environment. You already created your mixed use. So the next step as a strategy is to create a mixed use zoning regulation. That is one of them, the, because you already created, if you adopt this future land use map now, you already have a land use category that makes use three of them. So the next step is to create zoning districts that are compatible with this future land use. I can, and if you had a chance to look, but those are some of the things that I just wanted to bring to your attention.
So with the zoning that would follow the future land use map, is that where we would talk about density?
Yes.
Requirements?
Yes. I, if you look at this, I kind of, you know, I can get a consensus on what that, I know you mentioned at the last meeting to me about the density, went back, did some research, looked at some of the communities, what, I think I looked, I think Abingdon or one of the communities, and they were like, because I had density in this when I came the last time. But this time I, after, I couldn't, you know, we couldn't get really what number would that would be, so I kind of left it open. So if you look at this land use, I kind of just describe.
What page is that on?
Page 18.
Yeah, I had looked, I didn't, I didn't see any density.
Yeah, when I came the last time, I did have, and then, you know, you have that question about is, is it how many of them, like how many apartments are really in an acre in our town? I did look at that, and I look at other places where they have done mixed use, and I brought back some suggestion, but seemed to, we didn't come to consensus, I didn't get a strong direction which way to go. So I kind of made it really open-ended here, and so that way maybe your zoning will, will kind of, because then you can tell in your zoning, there is a regulation, this is just a guide, in your zoning, you can tell what density exactly. Because, you know, either in town, I think sometimes you don't do by density per acre, but when you say your minimum lot is 7,500, you, you know, for a single-family home, that almost become like a five units per acre. So that's, sometimes the towns will take different way of how they regulate density, but for a mixed use category, you will have to put density because it's units, you know, so many units per acre. So when you go and do create that mixed use zoning for each of the mixed use, it'll be, it is innovative because I, I wrote that is because, you know, you won't use your general parking requirements. In that particular mixed use, you can include your parking, because, you know, it's, you know, these areas that we designate in mixed use don't have, like, it's not greenfield developments, redevelopment, so parking will be hard, a lot of setbacks will be hard. So landscaping, so you, in, it'll contain in one district, in, in each of the mixed use district.
So you don't have to worry about it applying to a place where it doesn't make any sense?
Your signage, everything can be in that one. So you can do a little bit more innovative and creative way of making it work. So that is the way to go. And like one thing that I have done, some of the analysis that I have done too is the residential, which I find is a little, an issue which I feel I wrote in the, in the policy that you still need to assess, and you still need to designate, because it is not, you know, for your one acre lot unit per lot, to your 12 units per acre, it's all on the one residential land use category. So we, again, we did some analysis, we did some, I did some acreage to show where these in town are small and can accommodate a different use, land use category. But again, I didn't get any direction, so I left it as a policy that you will have to do.
So we could amend the future land use map to say, these are the places we want to see more than five units per, per acre?
Yes. So if you, if you don't mind going to the appendix, I kind of, I did some analysis, I just want to show you quickly, I did this when we were doing, if you go to the future land use analysis, that folder, future, future land use analysis, right there, that thing? Okay. It's called medium residential, I think?
Zoning or FLU?
So I did this when I kind of showed, when we were doing, when I went, you know, when I did the land use element analysis, I did the, see, it's already the acreage, I did by acres, they are already small parcels, this is a good candidate for a medium
Density.
Density. But again, so I did medium, I did different acres to show, to kind of give a, you know, the decision, whoever's making dishes, or giving me direction, I already gave some substantive, like evidence where.
Where it would be most beneficial.
Yes, so I, but again, I didn't get a direction, so I kind of left as is, but left a policy in place so that you all will take, will look at it. Thank you. That's all I have, if you have any questions for me.
All right. Any other questions? Do I have to open a public hearing? Will I still open a public hearing for that? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alfie. All right, now I'll open the public hearing for this. And as I have no one here, I will close the public hearing. All right. Have any other questions before we move on? Okay. Then we'll move to the, the ordinance 2023-10, adopting 2023 comprehensive plan. Do we have a staff report part for that?
Is there anything you want to say additionally at this point?
Do you have anything extra?
Please adopt it.
Well, I guess what we have done as a staff, based upon what we're seeing, are some inconsistencies. We have put out a request for proposals for an individual firm, company, to come in and take a look at each and every individual property within the town, and determine if it's correctly categorized in terms of its current use, or if there should be a change. Obviously, with the more recent rezoning that we went through, we knew there were other parcels in that area that also should undergo a similar redesignation, rezoning, but we wanted to get that one kind of out of the way. So we will be coming back in the near future with some proposed adjustments to the current zones. A good example, easy one, nobody's in it right now, is the Randolph, the former hospital on Randolph. It has a zoning category that doesn't even exist in our current zoning ordinance.
Commercial or something like that, right?
Yeah, and then if you look at the properties on either side and across the street, you realize that, you know, it obviously needs to have a zone that is comparable to those in that area. So we will be going through that process and bringing that forward, not remembering summer, when your requests for proposals are due in.
I think it's the second, early second week of July.
Okay. So we'll start work on that, at that time. We've also identified through multiple processes that there are a number of functions, business activities that don't have definitions within our zoning ordinance, and so we're going to be bringing those forward, some of them one at a time, some of them multiples, in order to get a better understanding of our zoning ordinance. And we've discovered that there's a zoning map change that was not officially recorded by either the Planning Commission or the Council, so I think it's slated now to be coming to you all in a couple of months. I think it goes to the Planning Commission next month, so do you all the following month. So in many So in many respects, the comprehensive plan update has forced us to take a real close look at what we have. And there are obviously some things that are wanting in that process, but I think we have those identified now and you'll be seeing a lot more in your future meetings that will begin these adjustments, either in definitions or in categories. And the first one that obviously needs to come forward is this mixed use categorization, because right now you're doing individual rezonings on each property as it comes forward. And yet, if that's the kind of zoning that we are striving for in that particular part of the downtown, then we ought to just rezone that whole area. But there are notice requirements that are required, we can't just go in and make those changes without the permission and with, in consultation with the property owners, just as we did on that one zoning where you had your special joint meeting several weeks ago. So there's a very ambitious work program now for the planning commission and the staff that's associated with them.
Council have questions?
I would just like to comment, this is very well done, certainly appreciate your work and your, your team and the town staff and everybody who worked together to get this done. This, this is by far the best plan that, that we've had and certainly much needed. And, and it gives us a good foundation, so I do appreciate everybody's work on this. This, this is exciting and, and very necessary, as you know, so thank you.
The one thing I would add to that, Mr. East, is that in order for this to be a living document, not something that's just put on the shelf and in five years we come back and do it again, is to have an annual review and report by the planning commission and the planning staff to say what we have accomplished or what we're working on in regard to some of these key issues. And there will be things that by the time this was published, we had already done. And so we did some modifications even as we were working and there'll be things in a report roughly this time next year, you know, that we'll say we've made no progress on because of a certain issue or item, or we've made significant progress on something else. But the key to the use of a comprehensive plan is to consistently and constantly have that review at both the planning commission and the council level. And so I would hope that the future for the town would hold that occurring on a regular basis, that's certainly my recommendation.
Yeah, and that, that's certainly necessary as well, I agree. I also did notice on page three in that nineteen twenty picture, it's two-way traffic on Main Street.
And I didn't pick that picture. I had nothing to do with it.
All right, I will open the public hearing for the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one zero, adopting the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan. And if anyone would like to speak. If not, I will close the public hearing. And then if you have no other questions, if someone would like to make a motion to accept.
Just to be, you know, accurate, it's the complaint and the future land use map. I forgot to include that. To adopt the complaint and the future land use map.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, adopting the comprehensive plan and the land use map.
And future land use.
Future land use map, I'm sorry, thank you.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Rattler?
Aye.
Mr. Quants?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Guess with that, we'll move to the public comment period. I have one here for Sarah Gray, if you would like to come up, please. If you were to say your name and your, where you live, yeah.
Sarah Gray, I'm at eight twenty-two New Bern Road. I wanted to comment on the low income household water assistance program. My question was mostly why we are not participating. It's been available since October and in addition to both the town of Dublin and PSA, but the town of Pulaski is not participating. I'm also a representative of the, of the emergency needs task force of Pulaski County and we provide assistance for, emergency assistance for water and electric right now. And since that program has opened, we have offered one hundred and ninety-three services totaling over eighty-four hundred dollars. We're running out of money and seeing as this is a program through the Virginia Department of Social Services. I didn't know if there was reasoning behind whether or not the town of Pulaski wasn't participating in the assistance.
Honestly, I'm not very aware of the, how does it work?
Households that are one hundred and fifty percent of the poverty level or below qualify for assistance with their water bills. And the, it's the water and the wastewater assistance.
Where does the assistance come from? You said Department of Social Services?
So it's similar to the LIWAP, the, the LIHEP, which is the fuel assistance program that operates through the Department of Social Services.
That sounds like something that, is that something the town just needs to apply to be part of, or is that something that they reached out to the town about already?
When, when the program opened, we sent out flyers to all the people that we've done assistance with in the last year. And the option is to either apply by phone or to apply online. And of course, when it was just starting, nobody was participating yet. So we encouraged participants to go ahead and put in an application, submit your documentation and just list who your utility company is. And then they took it upon themselves to reach out to those utility companies. I followed up probably early December, it was right before I was on leave. And the water assistance program just came back and said that the utility was not interested in participating.
So, so your organization qualifies the individual and determines?
No.
Who does that?
No, so I work with the emergency needs task force of Pulaski County, which is just a nonprofit that provides financial assistance and a food pantry to our residents that are two hundred percent poverty level and below. But because these are the people that we work with on a regular basis, if there's state funding available, we typically divert to state funding first before we use local money, because all of ours is donations. That they apply directly through Department of Social Service, like, versus state Department of Social Services, not the local one. So the applications were available online and by phone.
And did you submit a request for funding to the town of Pulaski?
I, I can't submit a request because I wasn't applying, but a number of our residents did.
So as, as I'm understanding it, in order for DSS to pay, your understanding of the program is, is in order for DSS to use the state funds to pay off or assist on the water bills, whatever they would do, the local utility, in this case, the town of Pulaski, would have to be a participant? So.
So like town of Blacksburg, both town of Blacksburg and town of Narrows are the only ones in the New River Valley that are actually participating right now.
Okay.
And the town of Withville is participating. But since I'm a resident in the town, I'm just kind of like, the program's coming to an end, they haven't depleted all of their money. And, I mean, there's a hundred and thirty-two, I believe, is the number of requests that we've had to deny because we just haven't had the funding for it.
I'm not familiar with any request that was made on, to the town of Pulaski for any assistance. There were, there was a program back at the end of last year where, for a limited period of time, and we had to submit information to the state as to which accounts were more than thirty days overdue, sixty, one hundred and twenty. And we offered to those individuals the opportunity to apply, to have some credits to their bills, but that program ended.
LIWAP hasn't ended.
Well, all I can tell you is there has not been a request to the town for any other participation, so. I don't know who would have made that request, but I'm not familiar with any request coming to the town for that purpose.
Would that be, I mean, like, could social services, would they need to contact us, you think?
It's not the local Department of Social Services.
It's state.
This is a pilot program, it is going directly through the state Department of Social Services.
I'm just not aware of it, if you want to have somebody contact either myself or the director of finance to determine what opportunity there was or is for the, the town to participate, but I'm just not aware of it at all.
Certainly sounds like a good program.
Yeah, they were paying up to twelve hundred dollars, one-time payment on bills and considering we've seen, you know, several hundred dollars worth. Would have saved us a pocket, pocketful of money.
If, if it's still available and out there.
I, I mean, and the most that I can do is reach out to the state level and just see how to initiate the process.
Unless the local social service agency is aware of it and could make contact directly, and I can certainly call the local social service director tomorrow and ask him if he has any knowledge of it, but.
I'm sure, and I'm sure he has knowledge of it, but again, they're not processing any of those applications.
Right, but they should know who, who's the contact.
So, according to their website, water and wastewater utilities must enroll with PROMIS, which sounds like some sort of third-party administrator in order to qualify. Utilities should contact PROMIS, I, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
I promise you I did not get contacted by PROMIS.
It's, it sounds like this is one of those things where they just, they forgot to connect the dots for the rest of us. So yeah, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, since I have no other speaker slips, we'll move to the consent agenda consideration of June sixth, twenty twenty-three town council meetings, minutes, I'm sorry. Someone would like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, one of the liabilities that we incur on a regular basis is the accrual of comp time. And unfortunately, the comp time doesn't have to currently be used at any point in time. And several years ago, the council created a two-hundred-hour limit, which is five weeks. And unfortunately, what happens is someone may earn the compensatory time. Last year, year before last, they carry it over and when they get ready to leave us, then they get paid, but at their then-current salary, as opposed to their salary hourly rate at the time in which it was originally accrued. That two-hundred hours or five weeks that some people can carry is in addition to annual leave and sick leave accrual and the very generous personal leave that we give employees of two days a year. And in trying to control that expense, my recommendation and that of the HR manager is that we reduce that to a hundred and sixty hours, which is still four weeks, which is still a lot. And we've tried to look at what neighboring jurisdictions are doing and it's really kind of all over the place. This provision or policy change would put a hundred and sixty hours as the limit as of July the first. But for those who are in excess of that, they would have till the end of the calendar year to work that off. Or where possible, if the budget allowed, pay someone to get those hours down. But there are certain people who, you know, constantly are at that two-hundred-hour mark. And we would like to have you all adjust that downward to a hundred and sixty hours as of the first of July.
When did we make the last change?
Last change was.
Couple of years ago.
Twenty-one, maybe?
Oh, it was, had to be before that big.
Yeah, it was, I think it was maybe twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen or eighteen.
Seventeen or eighteen.
I thought we had made a change since you had been here.
Yeah, not on compensatory time, not at all.
We, we did something with time or with accrual time with banking hours of, of some, some sort.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was.
A couple of years ago, though.
Yeah, no, but I, I remember, I know what he's talking about, I don't think. No, we made a change, there was.
We made a change to two-hundred, was it?
Increased it to two-hundred, is what you did at the last change.
No, but we did some, it was, I think it was not comp time, it was a different measurement of maybe, there was a cash payment that could be made.
What you did do was a policy regarding the payment of sick leave upon termination.
But there was something else to do with.
Was that people were leaving and getting paid sick leave up to a cap of ten thousand dollars.
Right.
And we changed the policy so that it was only eligible upon retirement, as opposed to someone just leaving. And we actually, you know, had a time period that I think was March of that particular year that people could announce that they wanted to retire and still receive that maximum of ten thousand, otherwise it went to, I believe, five thousand.
No, this, so comp time is when you work over forty hours in it.
That's correct.
Yeah, it was definitely comp time.
Oh, I think it was that we.
Operation where, when somebody went from being hourly to salary or something like that, there was, there was a significant one where somebody had pulled out, pulled significant hours, kind of like she was pointing out, where they had pulled significant hours at a much different rate and then when they ended up being a department head or something like that.
No, no, I think what he's talking about is there was a change we made at some point about, that we're supposed to use comp time in the same two-week period, like in the same pay period, or something like that. We made it some policy change to sort of, how we budgeted it, essentially that there was, the, the policy was, is that if you, if you work twelve hours on a Tuesday, you were supposed to, in that next week and a half, take, you know, get the four hours that you extra worked off and you weren't supposed to be banking comp time as much, I think.
Well.
That's my recollection.
Okay, the, the only thing that comes to mind is that there was a very short period of time where because of a snafu in state legislation, we were having to pay overtime without any option to pay through comp time accrual.
Oh, maybe that's what it was.
And the states.
Something like that, yeah.
Corrected within sixty days or so.
Right.
That issue, so we were able to go back to having accrual of comp time. And many of our employees prefer comp time because then it gives them more time off. And the argument that I had heard repeatedly was they wanted to go hunting. Well, I don't think most people go hunting for five weeks, maybe they do. But that is in addition to any annual leave accrual. So, and the holidays, and I would tell you that we have a good holiday benefit. We had one earlier this week, yesterday was a holiday, a federal holiday that we were able to benefit from. And so those things we really can't control, but I think the management of comp time is one that can and should be controlled. And it is a function of management to do that, and I think it's the next step in our trying to become a more manageable budget when it comes to personnel expenditures. And truthfully, people who have that kind of comp time should be managed in a way that they take some of that time off, that it doesn't just accrue. Now, under a current policy of two-hundred hours, if somebody gets to hour two-hundred and one, we have to pay them because they can't exceed that limit. So we do have occasions where people go over the two-hundred and our HR person immediately processes a payment for any hours over that amount. And there are going to be circumstances where we have no other choice, but to either give comp time or overtime, depending on what the financial situation is for any given department.
I, I, I agree with reducing it, but I think comp time to me is like accepting, accepting the work and pushing off the liability of the work, you know, and I think it's kind of a nasty habit to have, in my opinion, if you, somebody works, if we've worked somebody more that week, then in my opinion, overtime is, I know nobody wants to pay overtime and, and no one can afford to do it, but if that moment happened, then you're forced to do it, it forces you to change your way of thinking about how do I get around this situation. Whereas having the ability to push off even four weeks' worth of liability is kind of cheating the system and it makes it not, you know, think the way that it should.
Well, in an ideal world, which we don't live in, if somebody worked, good example is this young lady right here, worked more than, or is going to work more than her forty hours, given that she's working tonight. given that she's working tonight, um, I, as her manager, should try to help her find a way to take those same hours off this week. Uh, but if for some reason that's not possible, it becomes comp time and comp time is actually time and a half. It's not just a straight hour for hour. Um, so as managers, we should all try to manage, uh, the work week in a way, because there are going to be times that people are going to have to, their job itself requires them to be here. Or something comes up. We have a lot of, uh, work that's after hours work that's unexpected. And it's pretty hard to, uh, always arrange for that. And in certain emergencies, we automatically pay the overtime just because we know there's no other way to manage it. But, um, it's a significant liability, uh, to the town and represents a, uh, large amount of money. And, uh, what we would love to do, in my opinion, is have people take the time off within a certain period of time, not necessarily the same week if we can't do that, but to force management to be more conscientious of this and to be managing the comp time as opposed to some employees electing that they're going to work over in order to earn the comp time.
In your scenario, if somebody works two hours over, uh, in, in a particular week, then in order to comp that, they're going to have three hours off.
If I can't do it in the same work week, that's correct.
In a, in another week. And as full as our plates are and as short-staffed as we are, right? That's probably is more of a loss than paying overtime.
But so by reducing it to one-sixty from two-hundred, it doesn't eliminate our obligation to pay it? It just, what, what does it eliminate?
It eliminates the liability that we're carrying on our books.
That we're currently carrying. And they have from now till the end of the year to work that off, to take that time off. So we're not forcing them to lose it.
Yeah.
Uh, but we are saying between, you know, over the next six months, you need to take those hours off.
So it just potentially eliminates forty hours of money owed to liability for employees that would go.
It'll technically be sixty hours of salary or wage, because it's time and a half.
Reduces how much we're allowed to push off liability.
Yeah.
Because if we don't pay it until, every year we pay it that, you know, that somebody makes more money, it becomes more expensive. Cause they're sat, I mean theoretically, they're.
Everybody still gets paid the same. It's just less time that we can pretend like it wasn't there.
Well, I had one employee leave, uh, and this is not the reason for the policy, but one employee leave in the last six months who had been carrying a nominal amount of hours for probably twenty years. And they got paid at their final rate of pay as opposed to when they were in fact earning those comp time hours. So that, that's the problem with it. It just keeps increasing the value of the liability because you're carrying it for an indefinite period of time.
Is there any sort of way we could, I, I don't know, uh, this is a separate question. I'll think about it later.
I would say buy the winning lottery ticket and.
Oh, no, I meant just if there was like a tax advantage way we could do it, you know, offer it up instead of put it in comp time, put it in a five-oh, five-fifty, four-fifty-seven or some sort of ERS plan. As a matching fund or something like that.
All right. So, okay, before we move on this, my train went off the tracks there before because when he made the last motion for ord- it was, he said, resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-five with the comprehensive plan, that should not have been. It should have been ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten.
Did I say that?
You did.
Oh, I'm mistaken.
All of you heard it, but none of us said anything. We need to correct that first. So do we need to go back through and do the ordinance over or how would we do that?
And redo it.
Just redo the whole thing so that then we can, okay, if you would make.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, adopting the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan and future land use map.
Second.
And now may I have a roll call? Sorry.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Okay, now if someone make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, amending the town, town personnel policy regarding accrual, carryover and payout of comprehensive, comprehensive time.
I moved.
Second.
And now a roll call for that.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Okay, now we're back on track. All right, now the consent agenda, if you would look at, if someone to make a motion to accept the, um, minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty-three town council minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call for that, please.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Epstein.
All right. Move to the council comments. That would start with Mr. East. Do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have, um, two questions or one question, one comment. Uh, Ms. Bircham, I don't want to catch you off guard, but I, you, I heard you mention Randolph. What, what's the status of Randolph? Do you know right off? Okay, can you share?
We have been in the process of replacing the water line in a five-block area with our own crews and with, uh, our only charging for, um, the materials. We did get some estim- estimates for that line replacement, um, and we couldn't afford it. So we are working that as we have time and resources. And, uh, unfortunately, we've had a number of water main breaks otherwise elsewhere in the community as well as a few sewer issues. And we have to go on those first. So those become, the emergencies become the priorities. We've also had, and will continue to have, I think, the balance of this week, an awful lot of rain that, uh, causes delays. That particular section, that five-block section, had six or eight breaks in less than two years, which is why I said we're not going to continue to do this. Uh, we were hoping that we could do the work in time to have the paving contract that was paving all of Randolph and it's to go to the county line, uh, done by the contractor under the work that he has now completed up to this section. Uh, it appears, and I had an update just today, that it's going to be middle to the end of July before we'll be complete. But the plan is to, uh, as soon as the water line is replaced, to then come in and pave under the standard paving contract that the town has on an annual basis for other paving and will be doing some other paving at the same time. Uh, they did do that project in such a way that they could have the connections that will go to the individual properties, uh, that particular section done first so that we have a minimal amount of the road that is technically open for the repair, but it still is shut down. And, uh, we understand the inconvenience for people, but they won't have the kind of water line breaks, uh, and repairs that we have had in the past.
Okay, so progress is, is, is happening.
And I will also tell you, um, that I have offered to pay overtime, uh, to folks to work that, either in the evenings or on weekends. Um, we have a couple of projects like that, but some of our people are working enough that they're not really interested, um, in working, uh, the overtime because we have emergencies where they're forced to, uh, to do that. But that is clearly a priority. Our goal had been to finish it by the end of June so that the one contractor that we had, and that's a state-funded project that we have participated in on a minimal amount. So we're turning back money to the state, which hurts my heart. Um, but we are going to do it the right way.
Okay.
But I understand, uh, that it is concerning some people. In fact, I just heard from a mayor today about someone who was asking if, while the construction was continuing, if we could put some more gravel down where we have previously to try to help with these washouts that we have with the rain. And we're going to be handling that as well. But it's, it's going to get better.
Oh, I, I have no doubt it's going to get better. I just, I was just curious for the update. The only other comment I have was, um, the police, police department, I would like to commend, uh, Chief Neese and her staff or, or officers. Um, I don't know if you guys, and I'm sure you have, they're continually engaged, uh, and, and it's very obvious, um, out in the, you know, out in the community. I've had several comments from citizens very favorable, you know, regarding their kindness, their interaction. So I just want to just really commend, uh, Chief Neese and, and, and her officers for, for doing a fine job.
I will pass it on.
Yeah. And I think it's actually, I think it's reflecting in our community. I, I think it's having a significant impact, so.
And we're running short staff there. Um.
You, you couldn't.
We got another resignation in the last couple of weeks, so we don't stay fully staffed.
I'm, I'm sorry to hear that, but I, I have never seen so many officers just throughout town continually, so. It may be the same one or two riding, driving around really fast, but they're doing a great job, so.
That our, what I call our administrative officers, they're going out on service calls as well.
Okay.
The chief, the captain, uh, the lieutenants, they are responding too. Um, and you don't see that in a lot of communities, but you have a very dedicated workforce there.
It shows. It definitely shows. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark?
Nothing to me.
Mr. Dawson.
Doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, but, uh, it'd been a couple of meetings since, I guess, since we got updated information on Main Street project timeline of, you know, I don't know, it's kind of constantly changing based off of the most recent information. And so it'd be nice to, you know, I guess maybe the next week and catch a update on, on where.
Young man that's operating the, uh, Facebook page is doing some work on that. We should have some images for you all at that meeting on the eighteenth of some, um, shrubbery or trees as well as lighting that I know both of those were of major concern to the council. Uh, some of the materials that the VDOT has provided are more technical in nature and just, you know, have lots of writing on them that say something's fourteen inches from something, but we want you to see. And I think this is what you all were interested in, uh, seeing how many trees or shrubs would be planted where and what kind of lighting we would put in, as opposed to maybe what is the standard, uh, VDOT lighting. And I've certainly heard the council say, or some members of council say, that if we need to put some additional town money into this project to do it right the first time, and we're taking that to heart as we put some of these options together. Uh, but I think that, uh, July eighteenth meeting will be plenty of time for us to have that ready for you.
I think, I was actually just thought, thought about this today, uh, you know, not to throw another thought at it, but, you know, all of our current trees and tree boxes that are, you know, stretched beyond the stretch of Main Street that, you know, that project holds, they're all, you know, coordinated together. And that, you know, we're going to take that one block and we're going to completely take every one of those trees down and completely redo it, uh, you know, for the, for it all to look, you know, coordinated in the way it should. Do, do you think the rest of the trees that we have in tree boxes, I mean, it would probably double the amount of trees that we're talking about, but you, you, you don't want to plant trees on one block, one year, and then, you know, have all the other trees still look like what they did previously or, or have, have them be three years apart in age. And I don't know, maybe it's a silly thought, but I was kind of, kind of going through there. And if, if it were, if it's going to be, I don't know, eight trees planted down through there, would we, if it would take sixteen to, you know, to, to make sure that we went through, as you said, and kind of got it together all at once. I don't know, maybe that's a ridiculous expense. It may be, but, um, definitely maybe worth considering anyways that I don't think there's a ton of those tree boxes, but there's outside of that stretch, there's, there's more of them.
We can take a look at it.
And I had one more thing, but I can't remember what it was now, so I'll think of it later. Thank you.
Mr. Eckler.
I don't have, I don't have, I actually have a citizen complaint. Um, not a complaint. Uh, on Winfield Circle and Scott Street, we have some trees hanging over in the road. If you could get maybe somebody to take a look at that. And I guess coming up Scott Street, if you stop at the stop sign, you, you can ask, you can't even see anything coming left, so it's probably just, it's not a lot there, but probably just a little, whenever, whenever they get caught up, it's no big deal. And other than that, appreciate y'all for those work. Thank you.
Mr. Quants.
Nothing to look.
Mr. Reese.
Two things that came out of looking at the, um, comprehensive plan. Um, previously I, I was, um, when I was on the regional commission, they were talking about a, a grant program that Christiansburg has to handle, um, like help with surface runoff and, and flooding and stuff like that. And they did a study. And now they've got this program where you can, for, um, private homeowners can get grants through the state, DEQ, to sort of do some of the stuff that they're doing with VDOT, like the retention areas and, and things like that. But they first had to do like a study of the downtown and the, you know, because they have the same issue where they've got a lot of, you know, impervious surfaces. And it made me think about, as we're doing the comprehensive plan, if we could think of some ways in these, especially in this mixed unit downtown area, maybe put in some things that might make it a little bit more, um, get rid of some asphalt, I'm thinking. Thinking just like that, the Peak Creek Merkin tile, if, you know, do something that might be something slightly more like a gravel that's got the geo-grid in it. So it just creates a, and also I think that helps with, it's just so hot downtown during the day in the summer, uh, because of all that just radiant heat coming off. And I just think something, anything that we can do to make a little more grass, a little more, um, you know, just something that sucks up water and, and heat instead of just reflecting it and rushing it around. And the other thing I was thinking of, um, I think a few weeks back, I, I've been paying my utility bill through the direct deposit, um, program. And I was, uh, Ms. Bircham in the finance department told me that I could do that with my tax bill too, which is something I didn't know. So if, if you don't like writing a check, you can, you can sign up to do that with your, um, with your, uh, with your, uh, tax bills, which is extremely convenient and it's great. Cause I, and I was thinking, that's a small step that's great, but what I would really like to see is if we could, and this is not in the budget this year. So I'm thinking, maybe we could get somebody thinking in finance about what we could do to have like a one-stop shop for our citizens to see what's their water bill, what's their power bill, what's their, I mean, no, their property tax, their, uh, you know, utility and car bill, and be able to, to see all that in one place, make sure it's all getting paid out of their, uh, bank account and, you know, maybe elect not to get paper bills. I mean, the way postage is going up, I mean, that, just the printing and postage, if we could eliminate even a third of those, that's a couple hundred bucks a month, I would think, um, plus all the time and effort that goes into it. I know that's more of a long-term project, but it just feels like something that would fit in with all we're trying to do, just make this, everything more, a little more accessible for people. Um, and then we could also maybe get some other contact information to get in touch with them, because that would be, you would get one, you know, way that you'd be in communication, um, and things like that.
So that's it. Thank you. I'm sure that people have asked me stuff and I don't know what, I can't think of any of them. They need to. What I'd like is for people to come here and do their speaker slips. That works out very well because then I don't have to try to remember and tell you all. Anyway, we'll move on to manager's report with that. Ms. Bircham.
Um, actually, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, I would, uh, say that we consume so much of ourselves in getting a budget adopted and properly communicated and advising agencies of what has been approved in the budget and all that. But I really have not a lot to report, uh, this time, except, uh, to say thank you to all of you for your support, uh, throughout, uh, that process. And I know from, uh, receiving several, uh, emails from staff that they were most appreciative of, uh, the council awarding yesterday as a holiday, uh, for us and in the granting of the cost of living increase, which they'll see as of the first of July. Um, I think both of those, uh, actions are indicative of the kind of, uh, support that I believe you all as a council have, uh, for your employees. And there's not a single department that we have, I think, uh, that doesn't have several vacancies right now. And so we're running a little bit slower, um, in getting to some things. But I hope that, uh, the community understands that government is no different than anybody else when it comes to finding people, uh, who, uh, are willing and interested in working. And, uh, we look for the very best as we're trying to fill some of these key positions, uh, with the town. But we appreciate the support that the council continues to give. But we appreciate the support that the council continues to give us as we move forward. And I think from what I see, driving around the town, and I'm always seeing things that still need to be fixed or a sign that needs to be improved. But I think we are making significant progress. And so I would just ask people to let us know when they see something that needs to be done. It's always helpful to have other eyes out there because we can't be in all places at all times. And I'm particularly appreciative of Mr. East's comment because we have instituted several positive technology changes in the police department that are providing fantastic results for us. And I know people think as soon as a crime happens, we're supposed to have solved it yesterday. But there have been some interesting ones in the last week or so that they've solved and gotten confessions in two days. So there are things that are quietly but very efficiently going on. And I think that's true of every department that we have. So you've got a great staff here.
Okay, with that, just a reminder of our future council meetings. The July 4th council meeting has been canceled. We will have, the next one will be July 18th, closed session at 6:00. Open session begins at 7:00. I have nothing else on the agenda, so I declare this Town Council Meeting adjourned.